I will call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors for this joint work session to order. Ms. Rhodes, if you would do the same for the Planning Commission.
All right, you want me to start with the Planning Commission then?
Yeah, just call the meeting to order.
Oh, all right. It is seven o'clock, so I'll call this joint session of the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission to order. Please let it be reflected in the minutes.
And Ms. Lawrence, could you call the role of the Board of Supervisors, please?
May need to unmute.
They're unmuted. I think she might be too far away from the mic. We cannot hear you. Stand by, everyone.
And it's supposed to be on the 86th speaker?
Who do we have from the county on? I can't see you guys.
You want to go by districts? Bill Hodges.
I mean, I can see, I can see the board members. I'm talking about at, at, at the office.
Oh, I don't know.
To take the role, but I can't see.
We were having some technical difficulties.
Okay. Okay. So, Ms. Lawrence, if you could call the role of the Board of Supervisors, please.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Hodges.
Here from down West Point.
Who did you say? Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Miskowski.
Here. All right, Ms. Rhodes, your turn.
Okay. So we'll start with Vice Chair, Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Don is still muted, but I note his presence.
He's waving his hand. It's fine. We see, we see Mr. Breeden. Ms. Height.
I don't think she got unmuted either.
All right. Mr. Wagner, I saw his number.
I'm here.
Okay. So the only one, do we see Ms. Height's phone number?
I'm unmuted.
We got you. We got you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
I think she's the 843 number, but I'm trying to look it up.
Okay, thank you.
But somehow Charlie Pearsall got unmuted.
Bonnie Height's number is 814-7410.
But what about her home number, Don? I think that's the one we're, we're thinking we got here, 843.
That's the only number I have for ours or cell phone.
Hey, Charlie, since you're unmuted.
Wait a second. The darn thing is so hard.
Let me see if I have her. Let me see if I can text her.
What's going on here? Yeah, I think she's the 843 number, she's saying.
Okay, I don't have her phone number to text her. I'm just going to email her. I'm present, of course. Do you want to confirm her presence when I receive an email back rather than?
I'm here.
Oh, yay.
This is Bonnie.
Ms. Height, hello. All Planning Commissioners are in attendance. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. Next, we have review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Now, board members, we already have Board of Supervisors members and amended agenda in front of us, and then I sent out notice that we need action to add another agenda item. If I could get a motion from one of my members for that item.
And what was that addition, Travis?
Appointment of an interim county administrator.
I'll make a motion that we add the item to the agenda for the appointment of a temporary county administrator.
You also acknowledged that we're waiving the prior notice.
I do.
We'll go with Mr. Moore. Any discussion among Board of Supervisors members?
Didn't we also have a 4A to add?
It's one here.
Yeah, that's in the original amended that we had. This is adding the, the other item that was.
The second amended, okay. All right.
So we're going to vote on this as a separate item first to add this to an amended agenda, then we'll adopt the amended agenda. So if there's no discussion on the motion by Mr. Garber, Ms. Lawrence, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye. Now I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So move Mr. Trey.
Say again.
Hodges, Mr. Greenwood with the second. Discussion? Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye. Over to the Planning Commission.
So are we, are we making the same motions, or do we only need to make the second motion, which is adopt the amended agenda as approved by the Board?
That's right. You just adopt the amended agenda is all we need from you guys.
Okay, so you'll have a motion from a Planning Commissioner, please, to adopt the amended agenda as amended by the Board of Supervisors and approved. Okay, Mr. Breeden, do I have a second?
Second.
Good. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. So it's approved.
Okay, I think we're ready to roll here. So we're into 4A now, which is going to be work session matters, a update from Hill Studio, Mr. David Hill.
Negative, Travis. All points.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know what? I'm looking at my paper copy and not my.
Yes. Eric, if you could please unmute Mr. Jimmy Carr and allow him to present his screen.
You got me unmuted.
Okay. And if you could allow him to share his screen? Is Chuck on, Jimmy?
Uh, I thought he was going to, but I can't tell.
Got artificial live, but yeah, wrong screen.
You're sharing your screen. He needs to give me permission to share mine.
Gentlemen, we don't allow hosting privileges since the unfortunate hack last time.
Okay, he's got a presentation to make, so Mr. Chairman, request we can waive that?
That is exactly how we were hacked the previous time, so he can email it to us and we can present it for him.
Mr. Carr, can we, can we affect that, you know, without too much problem? Just send it over to them and they can put it up on the screen?
Yeah. Is it the clerk email address that I should be using?
Deputy clerk.
That'd be fine. Deputy clerk.
Stand by.
Mr. Chair, should we bypass this and go on to Hill?
Yeah, I think we want to get this, this out of the way. It's not going to take very long, and I think Mr. Carr has some other business that he was hoping to get to, but this is actually a pretty, a pretty exciting announcement that I think.
Oh, it is. No doubt.
I'll say, I'll do some housekeeping real quick. We did not specify what item that's going to be, what we approved to put on the agenda, so we're going to make that 6B. Ms. Lawrence, if you want to track that.
All right, the clerk should have my presentation soon now. It was prepared on a Mac, and usually when it's shown on a non-Mac, we'll have some fun with the animation settings, but we'll get through this.
Are we just about there?
They should have the presentation. There we go. Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to give you all a quick update tonight. I know you've got a lot on your agenda, so I just want to give you a brief overview of where we are and some of the important progress that was announced today. Go to the next slide. Okay, you can click three times. So again, I'm going to cover kind of where, oop, you got to go back one, where we started, where we've been, our plans for what we call Phase One of our project, and then a quick update on where we are with next steps. Go ahead. Let's go ahead and click. Yeah, so you all engaged all points back in September to be your broadband deployment partners in the county and to work on a whole of county solution. Go ahead. Starting in September and into October of last year, we completed a detailed needs assessment process. We did a lot of market analysis and did a fairly comprehensive identification for your currently unserved areas. Next slide. We started in October working on a network design for an initial area and began applying for relevant grants as soon as possible. Next slide. The following month in November, all points, the County and Dominion Energy Virginia entered into an agreement to advance our Fiber to the Home Initiative through a piece of legislation that we're using at the state level that we know as the middle mile statute. Next bullet. One of the things that we undertook, though, there are federal rules. There was a significant federal subsidy proceeding known as ARDOF, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, and the rules for participants in that program prohibit you from disclosing, basically to anyone, your bid or bidding intentions. So after we had the agreement secured, we were engaged by you and we had the relevant agreements in place, what we did was begin looking as soon as possible for the best place to get started where we could begin building some network and get some outside funding to make that happen. Go to the next slide, the next bullet, please. That federally imposed quiet period concluded at the end of February. Next bullet. And so we announced today that we received $1.5 million in federal funding that we will use to support construction of the, what we call Phase One. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so first bullet there. This is the area that we call Phase One. You can see it's a section in the eastern part of the county. Can I get the bullets up there on the left? Four more clicks, I think. Yep. So I want to be really clear that, you know, our work is not done, not by a long shot, and we were engaged by the county to pursue a whole of jurisdiction solution, but you also didn't engage us to sit on our heels. So as soon as we had enough work in place that we thought we could go out and competitively apply for federal funding, we got started doing that. So we really view Phase One as a beachhead. It was a target of opportunity where we thought we could be competitive, and we were. The first phase contains approximately 900 presently unserved locations. Those are the green dots that are on this map. The network that we designed for Phase One is about 60 miles of fiber optic infrastructure. I think you can give me one more click for my next bullet. And a key point, you know, I'll say this a couple of times, but this is really our beachhead for getting started, but we're working now with other partners to begin expanding this footprint, hopefully in time to expand what is Phase One. And if we can't move that quickly, it's certainly to put the next couple of phases in place so we can continue working through the entire county. Next slide. So as I mentioned now, so this is part of our agreement with you. We are the quarterback and kind of managing the process for recruiting and making arrangements with other parties, and so we're in the process of doing that. Next slide. Pursuant to the agreement that we've all signed with Dominion, we are finalizing a Phase One network plan that they will be submitting to the State Corporation Commission for approval of their involvement in the first phase of the project. And we are planning to continue to aggressively seek additional state and federal funding so we can continue expanding the footprint and reach all of the unserved areas in the county. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from members of the board if there are any.
And Jimmy, Ed Moore, and just to expound, this, this is based on Dominion Energy's fiber expansion to modernize their connectivity to their substations and whatnot, as well as potential for future, and the western part of the county for Rappahannock Electric perhaps, to come onboard and light up the western edge.
Yeah, I would say this, that, you know, we knew, we were in a position because of the way ARDOF works and because of our relationship with Dominion, we were in a position to be pretty aggressive in this particular area of the county with this particular funding program, and so rather than wait around for a perfect plan that included everywhere, we thought it was prudent to get started, and you know, there was an opportunity to get some federal money to help get fiber to home broadband in a part of the county, so we, we took a swing. But as you've mentioned, now that the federally imposed quiet period is over, we are able to talk with any number of additional potential partners and we are going to be talking to other electric utilities in the weeks to come. In fact, we've got some of those, a number of those meetings are scheduled for later this week and early next week, and we will be working with them to expand this project even further, a lot further.
Yeah, this is Stuart Garber, 4th District. I'm just wondering, the 1.5 million, does that have to be fully expended and utilized before we can apply for any more of the funding?
No.
It doesn't? Okay, good.
Just to, Bill Hodges' district, Warren, just to get an idea, with your red footprint, you know, the marks that you had, what part it starts, it looked like to me on that map, just north of West Point, and where does it, where is it stopping now by the proposal?
Well, if we can go back to the slide, you can see that exactly on the map. I don't recall exactly the street name, but it's about a third of the way into the county.
It was hard to tell. Is it past Central Garage?
No, we don't get all the way up to 360.
Okay, that's, that's where I was having difficulty identifying. Okay.
But it does start, you know, down at West Point. That's a logical place to begin the fiber build out and to move west.
Okay.
Looks like it goes up to the admin complex, Horse Landing Road, and then predominantly, of course, Dominion served communities.
What's the timeline on the build out of this? What's on this map?
So I want to be careful to manage expectations. You know, the funding is in place for this phase, and so are the partners, but building these types of networks takes a while, and so what we need to do next is to complete the work on our petition to go before the State Corporation Commission. That's a process that once a petition is submitted, it takes six months up to get, up to six months, but we assume it would be six months for SCC approval to be obtained. And so we think that the middle part of next year, probably late second quarter or early third quarter, if things go well at the SCC and otherwise, that would really be the timeframe when we'd expect you'd see construction underway.
Can this presentation be shared? Everybody at Phase now?
Yes.
Okay. Because just on, I know on screen rendering, it's somewhat difficult to see the map, and I know that there'll be people interested to see where it's coming. So great first step. Thank you very much for, for being proactive and getting this, this done. I know there'll be people in other areas of the county that feel, you know, left out, but as you noted, it's important. This is not the, the end. This is the beginning, and this is more rapid progress than I even had hoped for, so I'm excited to see it.
Yeah, and that, that point can't be emphasized enough. I mean, this is the beachhead. Again, you know, you engaged us for a whole of county solution, and that's our, that's what we're marching towards, but we felt, you know, we had enough network planned and enough work done in this particular area of the county to be competitive in this particular federal program, so you also engaged us to be aggressive, and we saw an opportunity, so we took a swing, and I'm pretty pleased with, you know, how quickly we're moving.
Jimmy, I certainly applaud you for the aggressiveness. I know you couldn't talk much about the ARDOF phase, but just moving out on this and getting this money, and your success in the northern neck as well proves at all points is, can do this and do this right, so thank you.
Just one more question, and if you can answer it. The fiber that was brought down to the administration building, did any hook on to that? Did that aid in this expansion?
No.
Okay, just one.
Mr. Carr, this is Stephen Greenwood, 3rd District, and the dots, I guess, represent individual houses, or is that just like clusters of houses, or?
Yeah, it's either a it's a location, so we use the term location in this business. You can think of it as a house, but those are either individual locations or clusters. So if there are too many, too close together, with the mapping software makes them look like one.
Okay. And then would they be reached out to tell that something's coming, or like you said, this is just the beachhead, so it's just sort of the beginning right now?
Yeah, so what, you know, we've encouraged people to go to our website, that's fiber allpointsbroadband.com, and they can enter their address. And I think we had a glitch in it earlier today that we noticed, so someone sent us an email and gave us some comments, but you should be able to enter your address, and the website survey will give you one of three answers. It will either say that you're in an area that is believed to be served already, or it will say you're in an area that is believed to be unserved, but you're not in Phase One yet, or it will say you're in an area that's unserved, and this is Phase One. And so we try and put that out there, and even people who are not in Phase One, it's the, the more traffic that you, especially in, you know, whatever routine communications you have with your constituents, the more you can drive people to that fiber allpointsbroadband.com website so they can complete the survey, the more information we have, and we also use that, you know, we've done a pretty thorough analysis of the areas that are served and unserved in the county. But the, that work always benefits from a kind of crowdsourcing, or, you know, people having the ability to go on the website and tell us whether or not we got it right.
Thank you.
And everyone, that press release is or will be on the county website. It's on the Quick Facebook page. I believe it's going to be pushed to the Tidewater Review and the Next Week Country Carrier for more information.
Okay, anybody else? All right, well, again, exciting news, best news I've heard all day. So thanks, Jimmy, and your team. We look forward to what's next.
Thank you all. We look forward to it, too.
Thank you.
Okay, now back onto the agenda proper. We had missed off earlier, so now we're into 4B, which is Hill Studio, Mr. David Hill. Who needs to be unmuted?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and my name is David Hill, and I am, let's say, I would also ask if you could please launch, we sent a PowerPoint show. If you might launch that PowerPoint show, we can narrate that as we go through. And while that's getting launched, I'll just mention that I asked the, the majority of my team to be here with us tonight on the call, on the Zoom, so that they might also introduce themselves. I'm a landscape architect by background. I'm the president of Hill Studio, and I'll be your project manager. And with me also is our senior planner, Eevee Sloan. So if you might unmute Eevee, she can say a word or two. And then Ross and Maria are part of our team, and they, they might say hello, and then special consultant Aaron Arnett is also on with us tonight. So, so Eevee, would you like to introduce yourself just real quickly, please? And it's also important that, so when you see all of us wandering around the county, you know, I wanted you to put a face with, with all these people, so that, you know, so you might remember who we are. So I don't know if it's possible to unmute all those folks, but Eevee Sloan, or Evelyn Sloan, Aaron Arnett, Maria Saxton, Ross Thomas. Any luck with that?
Yeah. Okay. I, I'm unmuted now, so hello, everybody. I, I'm Eevee Sloan, and I am a planner that has worked with Hill Studio for well over 15 years, and prior to that, I was actually in local government as a planner and as a planning director. So I understand what it's like to be in your shoes, and so I'm really, I've really enjoyed working on this project so far, and hopefully, my experience will really help get this plan up and going and headed in a real positive direction.
Aaron, I believe you're unmuted.
Okay. Hey, everyone. My name is Aaron Arnett, and I'm with Arnett Muldro and Associates, and we are a planning firm based out of Greenville, South Carolina. We, we work in economic development primarily with master planning, with visioning, and we've worked all throughout Virginia, even though we're based in South Carolina. In fact, we have a long relationship with Hill Studio that goes back, like Eevee said, more, at least more than 15 years. And as I mentioned, we work all over Virginia. We're actually working across the river from you all right now with Hill Studio on the Envision New Kent Strategic Plan. Our primary role on this comprehensive plan will be the economic development and housing elements, and we are excited to be on the team and excited to get started.
And then also with us, and we'll be working thoroughly with our team for the next year, Maria Saxton. Maria, you want to say hi?
She's muted, Dave.
I know, I can't say that. So, so Maria Saxton and also Ross. So, so Maria Saxton and also Ross. Maria, Dr. Saxton is a planner, just joined us about a year ago, and is a hokey, and will be working especially with some of the text chapters and also the housing components. And then Ross Hamas is, is also here. Ross also a planner and has been with us now two and a half years and is an expert in GIS systems. And so Ross will be working particularly on, on how the county is mapped and will coordinate with your GIS folks as we do the work. So, um, let's see, if you might advance to the next slide, please. Hill Studio and Arnett Muldro will be working on this project together, and will be working on it for about a year. We've been asked by our, our chief planner Sherry to, to get this project done within the next year. And we've also had our very first meeting, it was a virtual meeting, with the Comprehensive Plan Committee, who will be our direct liaison between our team and, and the county. Now, this chart is a, is kind of a simplified chart, a flow chart of, of the six different general chapters of the comprehensive plan. And you can see at the bottom how it works with three months, six months, and an eight to twelve months. There are six general phases that we'll be going through. Right now, we're in the project organization discussion phase. After that phase, we go into a conditioned research and documentation phase. Then we, in particularly, Ross and Aaron will be working on demographic and market assessment. And then about halfway through, we get into, after we kind of do all that work on learning about the county, we start to work on planning and development workshops. And this is where we literally start to see some of the results. The good news is, if everything goes well, you know, these first few months tend to be a little bit more us boots on the ground, and then the second half, especially adjusted toward COVID, is, you know, we'll be working with you a lot more directly in the field. We should have our draft comprehensive plan together in about eight months, and then we go through a series of reviews with you and the citizens to get to the final comprehensive plan in twelve months. So the next slide is a much more detailed version of this, of this last one, and it, and it starts to, you can start to see who is particularly responsible for the work. Hill Studio there, and AM is, is Aaron Arnett or Arnett Muldro, and who's involved. And so this, I believe this chart is actually on the county's website, and so you can look at this one in a little bit more detail, if you like, at your leisure. But it shows the, the, starting in January, January through December, how the task will be apportioned as we go through the work. The next picture indicates a project outreach. One of the, one of the advantages of having a Hill Studio and an Arnett Muldro comprehensive plan is we really try to customize the work for each particular location. And so and, and, and really, that not only means customize the, you know, the design or the plan, but also how we seek engagement with the citizens. And so there are a number of different ways that we, we do our outreach. If, you know, for example, if we just did everything by computer, it'd be likely that we would not get some people to participate. So with each of these four steps that you see in blue, the, the little white graphic in front of it shows some of the touch points with the public. Eevee, should, do you want to maybe express a little bit more about how this particular graphic works?
Well, right now, we're in conditions and opportunities, and so we have already met with the advise, with the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and and of course, you as a stakeholder, both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors are here tonight, and so that is also an opportunity for us to reach out to you in a, in a hands-on work session. We also, in the next probably couple of weeks, will be working with some focus groups on some more defined categories like housing or economic development or environment, different, different categories. And then we do also have a community meeting that we want to schedule sometime in the next couple of weeks as well. And that probably will be virtual, but we do also have some group meetings that we want to do in person. Certainly, we want to get down and, and tour the county personally to, to really kind of have you explain to us some of the, the challenges or maybe opportunities that you may have, and we want to become familiar with the county, so we'll be doing that as well. And then when Aaron undertakes the demographic and market analysis, he has market research that he does. And then we also want to tailor that with the census information, the release of the twenty twenty census. And so we, we may, depending on how that is published, it may be a little bit extended. And then a lot of times, there may be some special outreach that's required, or, or us obtaining some existing studies, especially as it relates to economic development and, and housing in particular. So we want to get our hands on that. And then with the planning and development workshop, as, as David has explained to you, that's really where we kind of get a little bit more technical in terms of trying to look at what the future may hold for the county and, and especially focusing on how to get there. And so at some point, we will invite some of our technical experts in, such as our transportation expert, or, or whoever it may be to help us with whatever we may need at that workshop. And of course, we want to work with the county and have this project well published on the county's webpage. We want to launch a, a Facebook page for the project, which we will also tie in with the county's webpage. And then we want community input probably through surveys and, and also some opportunities to be able to interact while we're doing that workshop. And of course, the comprehensive plan itself, you've got a advisory committee, the planning commission that we will be working fully hand in hand with the county staff, and I mean, all of the county staff, not necessarily just the planning director. And of course, you all hopefully in future work sessions, and then we'll have public hearings on the draft plan and the final plan. Of course, you, you'll hold the public hearings, but that we have to activate them.
And, and I know, Aaron, would you like to express any more about how you will be working on the market research or on the branding piece of this?
Right. I'm glad you mentioned that, David. One of the things that we'll be doing at the very beginning of the process is creating a project brand that represents the initiative, that represents the comprehensive plan. And it will have a unique name. It might be, I mean, some of the ideas we've been throwing around are like Blueprint, Blueprint King William County, something like that, or Envision New Kent County. That's an example right across the way from you all. That project brand will use to communicate with the public throughout this whole process on those tools that Eevee's already mentioned, like the community survey, like the Facebook page, like any of the tools that you all may use to communicate to the public as well. So that's the first thing that we'll do. And then we will get, I think Eevee's already touched on this. We, we will get into a very detailed analysis of the demographics and the market opportunities there in the community. We'll, we'll do a demographic profile, and, and as Eevee mentioned, you know, we're at a time right now where we're, we're going to have to figure out how to connect that with the new data that'll be coming out, but we'll, we'll be able to do that. And then we'll be looking at residential, commercial retail, and employment data to establish baselines and trends, and then incorporate that ultimately into not just the economic development element of the comp plan, but other strategies where they are relevant as well. So it'll, it'll be a pretty detailed analysis when we get into that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if you want to move to the next slide. You know, a lot of the work that we'll be doing is, is a research oriented, and a lot of it is, is on the ground. Ross has already put together this beginning base map for us, which starts to highlight some of the forested and, and wetland and, and open field areas, just to kind of give us the texture of the county. And also has some of the, you know, some of the towns and the villages that are already in the county. I, I bring that up just, just to let you know, we'll be working on a highly graphic form of presentation. It makes people really enjoy the plan. It makes people understand it better, and we'll be using this kind of mapping all the way throughout. Now, the, the next image indicates, let's see if you can advance to the next one, please. This is where we like to spend a little bit more of our time with you tonight, and I believe, and we have six questions here, and this, I, I believe this was sent out about a couple days ago, maybe in your packets, and some people have actually already gone ahead and written back answers, which is fine. And so we have those, but those of you who haven't had a chance to, to answer yet, I'm going to go through these questions. I will do the, the first two here just off of this chart, and Maria will be taking notes, and actually Ross will be taking notes, and then we're going to go to the, the next couple that we'll actually look on the, on the map and, and look at. So i- if we don't mind, we would like to, to ask you in particular, the board and the planning commission, what makes King William County special? This can be a hundred different things, a hundred different people. We'd like to get your thoughts for this particular question going in.
I would just like to say that more than anything, it's the people. It's the people that live in this county, and I do greatly encourage community input. You know, each one of us, board members, planning commission also, I guess we all have our vision, but at the end of the day, it's what the people want.
Thank you. But anybody else? To you, what makes King William County special?
History, heritage.
Thank you. Others?
Do we have them unmuted, I guess, is a fair question?
Right, please, please unmute the, the boards.
So I went ahead and, and completed the survey, and I was trying to look at it through kind of a planning lens, and so my answer for this was that we're, you know, as a growing county, we're kind of, we are at a crossroads of trying to, you know, really balance the suburban expansion with the rural character. Then we've also, a- as far as what makes us kind of unique is, as far as, you know, our proximity to the Chesapeake Bay and, and all of the interesting planning aspects that that brings along with it. We've got two very distinct kind of regions, if you will. You know, if you, if you kind of divide the line of the courthouse, everything going east is very much kind of a, a tidewater and, and tidal coastal type community, and for the most part, everything west is a more suburban and, and a bit different topography. So it's some challenges when you're trying to make a document like this to planning, because you have two very distinct kind of areas that you have to accommodate.
Brilliant. Excellent. Thank you.
And you already got my response, but what I've written was something similar to Travis. It's a beautiful rural county located near multiple urban suburban areas, and it also has excellent schools, so.
Excellent. Thank you. And you, you know, also with these questions, you know, this is kind of, some of these, I believe, may take an initial response and then maybe deep thought later. So by the next few months, you'll be tired of hearing this question, but the more people we ask, we'll ask a lot of people, and, and also, the more you think about it, it may, something might pop into your head. So so don't worry, this won't be the only chance you get to answer this question, but, but it, you know, as a, as a way of introduction for us that'll be wandering around the county over the next couple of months, is, is there, you know, is there anything else in your mind, before I leave this question? What makes King William County special? Anybody else?
Historic heritage we have in this county and the rural setting of the county, and surveys that have been done in the past show that a large majority of the people want to maintain that rural setting.
Excellent.
And I think this is one, maybe one important thing to tack on to that heritage, is the fact that we have two Indian reservations in the county. And they bring also, you know, unique perspectives and needs when it comes to planning that we need to take into account as well.
Travis, if I might add, I think it's actually three. It's the Madapana, the Upper Madapana, and the P'Monki.
You're right, three tribes, two reservations.
Yeah, okay, three tribes. And we also have the oldest continuously operated courthouse in the country, which will be celebrating its three hundred, three hundredth birthday in just four years.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yes.
I'd like to throw some in, Stephen Green with Third District. Like I said, we have the Indian reservations, plus they're named after the two rivers, two rivers that surround our county, and West Point is sort of like a peninsula. We're, our whole county is a peninsula because we're surrounded on three sides by water. So that's like Travis was mentioning about the topography and the different down there, Chesapeake Bay and all that stuff. We, our county is surrounded mostly by water, except on the narrowest side up at Mango Higgin, and, and like Mr. Wagner was saying, we'd like to keep the rural heritage, but I also wanted to put in, but we as supervisors, and I'm speaking for myself, and I'm hoping for the rest of the supervisors, we're trying to balance these things out because we still want to keep the rural character, but we still have things to pay for. We have functions and services that the community expects from us, and we do need to have some sort of balance between businesses on the Route three sixty and thirty corridors to be able to support all these things. So that's what I wanted to push, and I think that rolls into your next question, I guess, a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much. That, that's actually a great segue into that next question. You know, you're, what is your vision? And remember, as we do this comp plan, we'll have a whole lot of people's vision, but what is your vision over the next ten to fifteen years for the county? Mr. Greenwood, ready? Go ahead and.
Okay, yes, you're all keep going, and that's, I guess, where I was heading with that. Like I said, it's, it would be nice for us to just keep rural and be able to do everything that we want with the exact way it is, but that's just not possible, and we have to be more realistic in these things that we're doing. We're becoming more modern. Everybody wants internet now. We're actually almost needing it because the schools need it, people's businesses need it, people want to work from home now. Actually, we have to work from home now. But my vision, which I've always had ever since I got on, Travis and I are, I guess, the oldest ones on the board now, my vision from the very beginning was to do what's best for the citizens of the county, to promote the county, and to make it so that we are able to sustain those things to keep us going, because we, like I said, everybody wants these things, but, and they do. A common sense is you have to pay for these things, and nothing is getting cheaper. So we got to find ways to pay for these things, and that's what I think. I want to keep, keep the vision of rural for the communities out on the outlying areas outside of Route thirty and three sixty. But have, we gotta have something, more businesses. We've got to promote businesses to come in these areas. And like I said, the, the fact is big, not big business, but some businesses take rooftops to come into our county, and we need to balance out those things. We don't want to become Mechanicsville, like everybody says, but we need to do something and Smurfit, I'm not Smurfit, but the Wood Company and Nestle Perina have helped us greatly, two of our major corporations here in the county, but like I said, we need to do more and come up with other things, and like Mr. Moore came up with the, the initiative for the broadband. It really will help, I think. And we just need to keep and move forward with some of these things.
Thank you.
This is Don Wagner, Planning Commission. One of the things I would like to see, and I don't disagree with Mr. Greenwood, but we can do both. We certainly can have both. What I suggested and would like to see us delve into would be a Um, what I've suggested and would like to see us delve into would be a the establishment of a village center in the central garage area. Um, several years ago in two thousand and ten, the county got a grant for, uh, urban development areas to develop a plan for urban development areas that was worked on for a couple of years. And the board approved that, I believe, in two thousand and twelve, um, in the central garage area for three parcels in the three six, uh, surrounding the three sixty interchange with approximately, uh, five hundred acres total. But, uh, looking at some of those parcels, they can be expanded. They can be connected to other development in the area with a good plan. Um, we don't want to have anything where we're crossing three sixty, but, uh, other things on the north side of three sixty can be pretty well connected into a a village center. And the village center would be a real focal point for the county. So I would like to, uh, see, like to see us work with Hill Studios to look into that and see how that can be developed and how we can include it. It also needs to be included on our, in our comp plan, uh, as it was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? What's your vision for the county?
I'd like to say, uh, I'm in agreement somewhat with with everybody to. But the, it it all goes back to the community, you know, what they want. You know, we, we need to extensively uh, reach out to them and see what they want. Because, you know, I've lived in the county my whole life and, you know, it's a special place. And I certainly don't want it to be, uh, like Stephen said, a Mechanicsville. But, you know, everybody here has certain things that we need and we want. So, uh, just community input.
If I can echo Mr. Garber, uh, Hill Studios, you've got the two thousand and ten survey, which was, uh, which which had good response. However, I would like to see the citizen response even much greater on this comprehensive plan. We need to have all the citizens' involvement of what their vision is for the future, how they want the county to be. And and I'm hoping that this comprehensive plan is one that does not stay on the shelf, but rather is used extensively by staff, by the supervisors, by the planners to to be our vision for where we are today, where we're going over the next twenty years. The next twenty years are going to be critical with infrastructure, especially high speed internet. And that was one of my challenges that Mr. Moran and others have have put together. Uh, also access to enough water. In the twenty first century, water is going to be the key commodity. We've got a lot around us. Can we harness it for our use? So again, to echo Mr. Garber, all the citizens need to weigh in. This is their county. This is their plan. Uh, we're just the people putting it together. So so I said, thank you, Mr. Garber. I agree with that totally.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know you're, this is Bill Hodges District Warren. I know you're trying to get the opinions from the board members, but I I gotta agree with John, the public is the one that we really want the input from. I said here and listen, there's great ideas, uh, and we still got to move technologically forward, uh, even if we, how rural we stay, because we found out we can't make it without that technology. A- and getting on down to the opportunities further down for new investment, they're going to want it here before they come. Uh, they don't, they don't want to build the whole thing themselves when they get here, or they won't probably.
But I think one, one major shortfall that we've now come up with several solutions and we're we're working towards more is was the lack of broadband in the county until about two years ago. Now we have substantial, we have, uh, Segra supporting the schools and the county admin and courthouse. We have Atlantic broadband. We just heard from all points. So we're moving pretty fast compared to where we thought we would be by now several years ago. But that's a game changer for, uh, bringing in and incentivizing businesses to come to this county. We don't have to go with Nestle Perina, big, big, uh, industry. We can go with high tech, uh, low profile, high speed, good paying jobs. And I think we should emphasize that as far as, um, some of the branding, if you will, of the county is that capability that we now have.
Right. Ed, I think you're very much right on that. And it doesn't matter if you're a huge corporation or a small business, everything is done over the internet now. I mean, taxation, everything.
Yeah.
Uh, one, one thing I'd like to see us, uh, have a, have a plan for as part of this comprehensive plan is how we, you know, what we're providing for people that live here to actually do here. Um, you know, we've been pretty good at attracting rooftops. We, we talk a lot about attracting, uh, industry or tech businesses. And, um, you know, it's great, you can, you can hang out at home and you can certainly go to work, but you can't exactly, you know, hang out at the kitty litter plant, you know? A a data center. So, you know, I I think what the the crew that we've got, I think, have done an excellent job of trying to that program. I'd maybe like to see what opportunities there are, uh, through many different avenues for just more, um, you know, talking about types of businesses that that add to a community from a cultural standpoint, restaurants and things like that. Um, how do we encourage more development of that at a local level? You know, chains are, chains are great, but they don't have that, that local touch that kind of give a community a sense of place. And then beyond that, recreational opportunities, centers, development of parks and things like that, that, um, you know, we've got what we have, but we don't really have a vision for what we're doing after that. Uh, you know, how can we expand those opportunities for people who, again, we want to attract businesses here? That's going to attract rooftops. Um, but you know, right now, we don't even have a pharmacy in the county. And that's, you know, um, it's not necessarily a direct function of either one of these boards. But at the same time, if we had a vision for it, maybe we could, um, you know, bring some more quality of life things along. I think would be important to to add into how we balance the suburban expansion and how we attract, um, new and more diverse businesses.
Great. Thank you.
Maybe that kind of segues into the next one. Um, you know, where we talk about the challenges that we face and we talked about broadband. Um, but I think that as as broadband, especially in the central garage area gets solved, it it was, water was brought up. That's going to be a big one. Uh, if we're going to attract businesses and if we're going to expand what we have and if we're going to have more rooftops up in the areas where we say they make sense to be. Um, you know, Mr. Hodges has been talking about what we need to do to plan for the next ten to fifteen years of water. That's going to be an expense. It's going to be a challenge. Um, I think, uh, state regulation is going to continue to be a challenge, especially when it comes to, uh, to the Bay Act. Um, as that, you know, continues to expand, especially given the the legislative climate in the state right now. I think we can expect for it to continue to become more and more difficult to build a new building in a Bay Act locality like King William. So we're going to have to have a plan for how we, uh, navigate the Bay Act, how we help our clients through that when we have a project that we want to support. And, um, there was a third one, but I got so tied up in those other two, uh, I'll come back to that one. But I think those are two, uh, two pretty glaring ones that come right to the top of mind for me.
Yeah, maybe if you could advance the slide to the the next slide, it it kind of asked, it it has a nap to kind of cue some of these responses as well. So, uh, what are others? Um, what do you see as some of the top challenges for the county? Uh, you know, during the the period of this, uh, comp plan in the future?
If I may, this is Janie on the planning commission. Um, I would say, you know, the configuration of the county in some ways is an asset. As Mr. Greenwood was pointing out, we're surrounded by water, which is a wonderful thing, and I think we can capitalize on that. But I think what happens is, you know, our main thoroughfare, three sixty is really, um, a pass through for vehicular traffic from Richmond. And so our county doesn't become a destination point. No one's coming to our county to do their shopping. And so for me, realistically, the focus, and this kind of points to Travis's point, was, you know, focus maybe on having a, um, robust support for our local businesses to serve our immediate communities. Um, and maybe have focus on businesses that are consistent with, um, the community, whether it's farming or, uh, waterway activities, hunting, fishing, things of that nature. Um, the other observation would be, you know, of many of the folks in our county who live here don't, don't work here and they don't shop here. And so they come here, land maybe cheaper, but we're kind of a in between Fredericksburg and Richmond. So they may move here, but take their dollars elsewhere in terms of working and shopping. And so, um, you have this potential for, you know, you you have homes popping up that utilize county resources in terms of structures and school and things of that nature. But the the dollars are going elsewhere in terms of shopping. I think it's a challenge. I don't think it's insurmountable, but I do think it's a challenge.
Right. Thank you.
Let me just chime, I'm gonna chime back in because I remember what my third point was, and it was one that was brought up through the chat by by Mr. Couch. And that is, um, you know, thinking about agriculture, we talk a lot about, uh, wanting to keep it rural, but you're not going to keep it rural if we're not supporting, uh, the the business that is keeping the rural areas rural, which is farming and agriculture. So, uh, we need to, uh, have a plan for, you know, not only what we do currently to support it, but I'd like to see how we can, uh, encourage more people to either get into farming, encourage people to stay in farming and not have these lots in the areas that we want, that we say that we want, according to this plan that we adopt to stay rural. They're not going to stay rural if farming's not working. Um, and so how do we engage partners, um, to, um, to make it work and and make it a sustainable life for somebody who wants to do it?
And with that forestry?
Yes.
Of course.
Well, we need, we need to look at a lot of other uses of that agricultural land as it turns over. Um, things like nurseries and, uh, vineyards and wineries. And, you know, those are just some examples, but there are several examples of farm-related uses that can be developed as these, uh, large farms go out of business or turned over or whatever. But, uh, we do need to try, do our best to keep those areas rural. And we need to look at how we're going to allow development, particularly the residential development in these, um, rural areas. So we have somehow got to get a better handle on that and be in a position where we can better manage where a lot of this rural development is going right now. Also, one of the, we, we talk about our waterways and how attractive they are, but you can't get there.
Yes.
We really need to look at ways that we can or places we can, um, gain access to the water. And one, one possibility is the Sandy Point State Forest, which is, uh, believed open to the public, but we need to work, the county needs to work with the, um, I believe it Department of Forestry that manages that now to, um, work out other ways that the county citizens can use that forest, uh, that forest and the beach. Um, I don't know what kind of beach we have there now, but it, you do have good access to water and how can we capitalize on that?
Thank you. You know, it's interesting, there's some, some really interesting stuff also coming up in the chat. I hope, uh, uh, maybe if our administrator make sure you copy that before you turn off the conversation, because, uh, this would be really interesting for us to also put into the list. Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, top three challenges that we need to deal with? Or one or two challenges? I'll, I'll go there too. You don't have to exactly have three.
Mr. Hill, I don't have any, like, three, but like, I'm just segueing on what, uh, Mr. Wiskowski and Janie said and and Mr. Wagner. Like I said, we, and I, as I mentioned, the waterways, I just thought about that. Like, uh, um, Mr. Hodges said, beautiful downtown West Point. Back in the day, we had a beautiful hotel. I mean, it must have been five star hotel. The the pool outline is still there to this day, but everything is rundown now. I, I mean, I'm sure Mr. Hodges would agree that I think West Point would be a beaut, we used to have a nice restaurant that was floating on water there, but it got torn down when the bridge came through. And there, like you said, I think if we could get restaurants, local restaurants, uh, uh, maybe some sort of, uh, venue. We have the new, uh, uh, facility that we allowed the, um, uh, what's it called, a pavilion? But of course, with COVID, that's, uh, not being able to be used, but it is very nice. I went up there and looked at it, something like that, like, uh, somebody else was saying, maybe in the central garage areas, Mr. Wagner was saying, to bring, we have the Parks and Rec Center, but that's just for certain things. Maybe we need to build in the, a Red Barn. I mean, we had a, a beer place that was going to come in there. Maybe we need to get a farmer's market or something like that, like just had to bring, make people stop here on the way through to their destination in Northern Neck or Tapahannock or wherever they're going on the way home. They want to stop in King William to spend money here for us instead of taking it elsewhere. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Okay. Um, yeah, but, uh, if we might move on to the next slide, uh, the next one is it, it it's kind of same general vein of this, but it is what? Where are there, where are there opportunities to enhance the county and to promote investment? And people brought up, I believe, already, uh, the, the three sixty corridor, perhaps central garage. Are there other opportunities and and where, where might they be to really enhance the county or promote new investment?
Uh, I would say, oh, I apologize.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, I was just going to point out the three sixty, you know, has, has always kind of been the focus, but our local traffic is not three sixty. Our local traffic is primarily Route thirty. So I would encourage our looking at Route thirty, um, sections as being potentials for these opportunities, not just a three sixty corridor, which is just a natural pass through.
Good point, Janie. Uh, the, the proximity to, uh, Interstate I ninety five and rail in the western edge of the county.
But she's right on Route thirty. It, the traffic on that highway is, it's, it seems like to me it's doubled in the last five years.
We're, we're still only showing about five thousand vehicles per day on Route thirty at Central Garage, and it drops off to one either direction, but there are opportunities there. Um, there may be a development coming that would add probably another twenty five hundred vehicles per day. And I think there will, are opportunities for other development. One of the things I would like to see, though, um, in the courthouse area, I would like to see the development of a a village area in that courthouse area to provide shops, uh, personal service shops that, uh, would be attractive to to the employees that there. Uh, office space to bring more of the surveyors, uh, attorneys and so forth into that area, uh, close by to the courthouse. I think something like that would be an attraction, um, along Route thirty that would certainly help the county.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I think, uh, Tim Vaughn just posted something. Uh, his question was, how many of those vehicles are logging trucks? People traveling back and forth, you know, to the mill? That's one of the, uh, hindrances of Route thirty is if people are, a lot of people would consider Route thirty going off the beaten path, in my opinion only. Uh, say, you know, traveling from Tapahannock to to Richmond for their job. Uh, it would be great if that could ever become a dual highway. There's always been a lot of talk there, but that would be VDOT.
Stuart, uh, VDOT traffic counts show about twenty five percent truck traffic on Route thirty, which is very high.
Right, yeah. And that deters people, that would be a deterrence also. Uh, some of those logging trucks getting hung up behind them or, you know, it's just, it's, it's sad that it's not a dual highway.
Are there other places that that people have in mind that that would be, uh, really, uh, great opportunities for? Either to enhance the county or and or promote new development?
Mr. Hill, as you said, uh, like I said, I mean, I don't hate bringing three sixty back up, but we have a few areas that are, are, were kind of developed for that, but have never, they, we've had just that major problems with them. The industrial park right there at three sixty, but we have problems with sewer and water. Uh, we have problems with internet. Um, we have a, a com, industrial park in West Point. It's some stuff is coming in. I think we just have our new recycling plant going in there, but there's a industrial park there that could be a possibility where there might be sites that are already ready. That's what the EDA was working with us for in the past, trying to come up with some sites that are already ready so we can show them to to businesses to come to our county instead of like going somewhere else because they find lots that are already ready, have water sewer, have internet. And then we get pushed by the wayside. So but those few places are, are already kind of started. If we could just figure out a way to advertise them or make them better. So, but those few places are, are already kind of started if we could just figure out a way to advertise them or make them better.
Sure. Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
One thing I would recommend uh along that line is a better relationship, a closer relationship between the uh Planning Commission, the EDA, and the Board of Supervisors. We, we need to get together and get together on uh what we want for this county and how we're gonna get it. But we also need to get the EDA very much involved in where we're going. Not that they're not involved now, they are. But um a comprehensive look at the county rather than just um three different areas going off in different directions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our last question on this uh survey, i- if you, uh, if you might maybe go back a couple um slides is um, do you have any recommendations for the best ways to engage citizens? You know, each county is different, and as you've mentioned, different parts of the county are very different from other parts. Um, I believe uh we've uh seen in the past, you've had some really good luck with uh surveys that, that have been uh a great way to engage folks. But uh, do you have advice on any special ways that we might reach? We wanna reach the quietest voice in the county, you know, to really hear what they have to say. Any, any special advice on that?
It's unfortunate, I'll chime in again, the unfortunate part is to get that person that you're talking about, the best way to be would be to go to their house. But that's kind of hard to do. A lot of people, like we said, we don't have a lot of internet. Some of those people that are the most remote and hardest to get to have no, or maybe even don't even know how to use the internet. So if we did a Survey Monkey or had a online survey, they wouldn't be able to get to it, or maybe even don't know how. But I mean, if you wanna know the truth, like you said, the most remote way to get to the smallest or portion is of physically low, uh visiting. But uh mailing, maybe you could mail them. It, I guess everybody would have a mail mailbox or something like that.
I think it's gonna have to be a joint effort in terms of, and, and we did this for the Planning Commission on the ordinance um where you've got Zoom meetings for your focus groups, you've got uh mailings, uh but you also wanna make sure that you reach as many people as you can, because I know some people didn't receive those surveys. Um, you would have uh the website, the county website with a link to it with surveys. Make sure that the questions are thoughtful um and engaging and fair. Um, and I, I mean, and advertisements in the paper. I mean, I think we're gonna have to tackle it all different ways, frankly.
Right. That makes sense. Yeah, yeah, usually to get saturated, you have to do a number of, of ways.
Um, I, I shared several things with y'all, but two I wanna emphasize right now. Uh, I'd be very interested in what the young people and their families uh have a vision for the future. We could maybe send something out to the school system, which we give a whole lot of folks. And the other thing I would hope y'all could do for us is to help put together a, a type of, of presentation that community leaders can take to different organizations throughout the county to say, here's what your comp plan is, here's why it's important. What's your vision for it?
Great idea. Yeah, definitely.
Churches, that would be good, because a lot of people do go to church, yeah.
Right. Excellent. Yeah, uh, this, this thing that John mentioned, uh, we, I believe we brought that up, it, it may be a way that we can uh uh in, ask to be invited to the government, school government class and uh and ask for, you know, the younger generation to participate, you know, it's, it's their county, you're just taking care of it for a little while till they get old enough. You know, it's a great way to sort of get them involved and uh and we'll get some great answers sometime when we do that.
A lot of times the schools really like to have the opportunity to participate as a group, you know, uh, taking in, if they were taking in the information from the other kids uh in, in a, uh, rather it be a sanction group to, that y'all could employ.
The Historical Society paid for a dig at the courthouse, and we involved the school system, and they were very enthusiastic. And hopefully, when COVID is passed, we'll do it again. But uh the, I, I, the schools are an excellent place to reach out to folks.
Right. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you all. This has been a, a terrific beginning to get, to get your vision on this. We'll be asking the same questions and, you know, different versions of this, of these to a number of people over the next uh several months. And um, uh, before we adjourn, I'll, I'll ask Evie, um, Evie, was there anything else that we needed to make sure to ask this group tonight? Either you or Aaron, because I know you're getting ready to get started on your more detailed research assignments. Anything else?
Well, it, it always is nice to be able to be aware of existing plans and things that have been done. Um, one of the things that I was curious about is if the Board of Supervisors had actually done any kind of a visioning session or a mission session. Uh, and if you have, um, I would, I would, we would appreciate um having you share that with us. Um, it's, it's uh always important to, to integrate the community vision and be sure that the Board of Supervisors and uh a- and as someone has pointed out, even the Economic Development um uh group um to, to also kind of um dovetail with that. Um, so uh anything that, any kind of studies or uh initiatives that you think are important, if you will pass that on to David, um, we would very much appreciate knowing about it and uh understanding it a little bit more. Um, and I think that this has been a, just a, a great um discussion tonight. And it, uh, even though uh indeed we will reach out to the community and, and that will be um the, probably the most uh significant uh input that we get um to establish the vision for the county in the future. Also very important that, that you share that vision that you have as, as well so that hopefully it is all um coordinated.
Well, well, thank you all very much for letting us uh come to your meeting this evening. And uh, Aaron, did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
I don't have anything else to add. I think this has been a great conversation, and I've enjoyed hearing from you all about, you know, your, your passion about the county. And like I said before, we're just excited to be working with you all.
So thank you all very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll hand it back, and uh, and we really appreciate this engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Good conversation. We appreciate you facilitating that, and we look forward to uh working with you going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have uh the newly made 4C Regional Security Center. We have Sheriff Walton and Timothy Doss, Superintendent of the Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center, uh on. If we could get them unmuted, please, so they can begin.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you uh for the opportunity that we can just to give you a quick overview of the operations at the, at the uh regional jail facility uh and some of the challenges that we're facing going forward into the new year. Uh, I just wanna, Mr. Dawson will be the superintendent of this uh facility is gonna uh give you the presentation. But I just wanna say, um, Mr. Dawson and his staff do a wonderful job uh trying to keep the cost very low. And for a number of years, we have done just that, or he's done just that. Uh, but we're facing some new challenges and, and, and not just um for King William, but for all the five uh participants of the jail. We average, uh, for King William alone, we average about thirty-some people uh housed at the regional jail for King William County. And keep in mind that, that uh those persons are not just those arrested by the King William Sheriff's Office, but by the town of West Point Police Department, the Virginia State Police, uh the Game Commission. Anyone who, who affects an arrest or charges someone uh for crime here in King William or housed at our regional facility. Uh, so I'll, I'll hand it over now to Mr. Dawson, let him uh explain a little bit about where we are.
Sheriff, do you know if Mr. Dawson's on? Or do you have a phone number for him?
Uh, you've got him muted. He's on.
Do you know which um number he is?
It's on the NPRSC.
NPR?
Yeah, M, MPRSC.
Okay.
There we go. Good evening. How's, how's everybody doing this evening?
Very well. We've got you.
Well, good, good. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to chat a little bit uh about our facility and the, the, the good job that the staff here does. Just, I wanted to give you a little uh information, if, if you would bear with me just for a minute, about the facility and the staff. And then we'll get into the presentation that I have for you or that we have for you. First, I'd like to introduce um on my left, which I believe would probably be on your left also, it's Captain Bristow and um Ann Hogg. Uh, Ann Hogg is our Finance Director, and Captain Bristow is uh my right-hand man here at the facility. Uh, we have a, a team that consists on a weekly basis of seventy-eight members. There would be seventy-one staff members here, three counselors full-time from the Community Service Board, three kitchen staff from a, you know, the company that we have contracted for our food here for the inmates, and one physician. I include all of those because they're an intricate part of the team on a weekly basis here at the facility. Uh, this facility was opened in nineteen ninety-nine. We are certified by the Department of Corrections to house a hundred and twenty-one inmates. We currently average in the mid-one-sixties. Um, we have three hundred and six actual beds if we needed to, and at some points in the past, we've been a little over three hundred. Um, as everyone is aware, COVID has hit us all very hard in March, I believe it's March seventeenth. We shut completely down minus, uh, the only thing we would allow or a new arrest to come into the facility. The courts actually shut down for a while, but now all that's back open. Our work release units have been down. I am pleased to say with the work of the staff here at the facility and the support that we've received from um our jail authority and the member jurisdictions, well, I neglected at first, but I'd like to thank you for the CARES funding that you sent um on behalf of King William. That was greatly appreciated. Knock on wood, we have not had an active case of COVID in the facility. We have had two that generated from the facility. We had two uh active cases that came in as far as arrests. So they were immediately placed into our medical unit and then released shortly after. So we've been very blessed on that end. Um, COVID and uh the current state of affairs has um greatly reduced our revenue sources. In the past, one thing that we, we did and we were, have been very successful, as the sheriff said, we've worked very hard to build a financial foundation um to enable us to handle um capital improvement programs or anything unforeseen that would arise uh without going back to our member jurisdictions for additional funding. Um, we would hold inmates from other jurisdictions at a daily per diem. Um, however, that, those avenues of, of a revenue source have gone. Um, all facilities are having a hard time staffing their, their agencies. And there's just, there's just no more inmates to house and to bring in additional revenue. If we could go ahead and bring up the um presentation, I'll start. This is the budget presentation. Our budget was approved at our last meeting or at a meeting last Wednesday. If we could put up. There we go. Thank you very much. Um, if we could go to the next screen. There we go, that one there. Thank you so much. Um, as you can see, our, some of the uh FY twenty-two budget challenges were as a result of COVID nineteen. Our work release unit has been on hold. Uh, we've not sent any inmates out since March. I believe it was, like I said, was seven, March seventeen. Uh, so that has allowed for our water usage to increase. Of course, we pay for our water here at the facility through Aqua. Um, it's had a reduction in the fees that we collect, a reduction in the expenses that we collect, and an intangible savings reduced water and tear on our vehicles. Our road crews have been on hold and have not been able to go out. Uh, it's increased cleaning and hand washing, and our interest earnings have drastically reduced as a result. Next page, please. Our revenue changes, you see our uh Department of Corrections reimbursement. And to give you a little information on that, the Department of Corrections, we receive four dollars per day for every state response, or I'm sorry, uh, non-state responsible inmate. For every state responsible inmate, we receive twelve dollars a day. So if an inmate is sentenced to a year or more, they become a state responsible inmate ninety-one days after the date that they were sentenced. And that's when that we s- or have the ability to start receiving the twelve dollars a day. So we don't receive uh very much funding from the state uh to house our inmate population. Our work release fees for FY twenty-one, you'll see we're seventy-eight thousand. We're anticipating four thousand for FY twenty-two. So that's a decrease of seventy-four thousand. Our work release travel fees, we're twenty-eight thousand in twenty-one, and we expect that to be zero. So that's a deficit of twenty-eight thousand. Um, and you'll see through the categories, our GED teacher, it'll be an increase of six hundred dollars. And our interests, earned interest income, you'll see it's gone from seventy thousand in twenty-one to ten thousand, which is a deficit of sixty thousand. So our total deficit of revenue, um, expected revenue is a hundred and forty-eight thousand eighty-eight dollars. You go to the next slide, please. Our FY twenty-two expense changes were relatively minor. I'm considering the size of our budget, our total expenditure increases, expense increases are thirty-six thousand nine hundred. See, vehicle repairs, we dropped that five thousand. We have an increase in advertising. And that's, the majority of that, if not all of that, is for um job employment, advertising. Our fuel has decreased, our water has increased, uh, water treatment has increased. Um, our food service, you'll see a large increase there of thirty-three thousand. To give you a little bit of an explanation of that, when we contract with the food service vendor, the, they of course give us a per cost, per meal cost, and that's based off of your average daily population. So the more inmates that you have, the cheaper the uh meal cost to facility. And there's a, there's a price structure for the number of inmates that you have. So the current meals that we have meet the requirements set by the Department of Corrections, and they're certified by a nutritionist. However, they're are um not that appealing, if you will. And I understand that the uh individuals are in jail, but we're trying to, to provide them a better meal. And what we have found since we've been in this contractor, the number of grievances that we've received concerning our meals, even though we meet the requirements, has, have cost us a tremendous amount of man-hours weekly since the contract, and this is for the last three or four years. Um, and we're, I'm referring to man-hours that could easily exceed twenty hours a week of uh dedicated time just to answer the grievances. So you'll see our expenses increased thirty-six thousand nine hundred. If we could go to the next slide. And our next slide is, is, is probably the biggest, and if, if you've received this, I'm sure if you have questions, you have the most probably about this slide here. First you'll see is a two percent COLA adjustment. Several years ago, four or five years ago, the board approved a process um in reference to raises for the staff here. What we've found, when I first started here, um, the staff had not received a raise for, I believe it was five or seven years before I What we've found, when I first started here, the staff had not received a raise for, I believe it was five or seven years before I came here. And it took several years, and we were able to develop a process that was fair to all five of the jurisdictions, and we're very blessed that the authority approved this because what would happen is we would request an increase for our staff, and then it would be hard for the sheriffs to request or to approve that request because their deputies or employees may not be receiving an increase during that year. Even though they felt the staff here should receive it, if their officers didn't receive it, it was hard. Adopted and approved by the jail authorities, we have five member jurisdictions. Every year, if three or more jurisdictions, sheriff's offices, their deputies receive a raise, the staff here receives it, an average of that raise. So if only two of the five receive raises, then the staff here does not receive a raise. So we automatically include a two percent for budgetary purposes, and we'll find out in May if that actually will be implemented or not. We always include, as per the jail authority, a twenty percent increase for our health insurance because we don't receive our actual amount or quote until after the budget's approved or later in the budget process. You'll see in FY twenty-one, in November, I went in front of the jail authority and requested a significant salary restructuring for our staff. And what we were, what we found here is the same thing that all the sheriff's offices are finding and all of the regional jails are finding, and that's why it's added throughout the state. And I think that it's even more critical than the majority of the jurisdictions realize. What we were finding is we were unable to even obtain applications. And when I first started here, we might receive anywhere from twenty to forty applications for an open position, and we were lucky if we received two or three, and of those two or three currently, then they would have a criminal background. So we did a salary analysis of our surrounding jurisdictions, and we were well below the average salary, or the starting salary, actually, of the jurisdictions that were close to us. To give you an example, our non, previously, our non-certified salary was thirty-three thousand, and our certified was thirty-five-two. At that time, before the authority graciously approved this request, they could go to Northern Ex Regional and start at forty-two. They could go to Pamukka and start at forty-two. They could go to Gloucester and start at forty-one. So we were losing staff, and individuals wouldn't apply because they could make more in their salary at other locations. So we brought our current officer salaries, our sworn personnel, up to thirty-nine non-certified and forty-two thousand certified. Now, in order to help offset that cost to the facility, we had an open lieutenant's position and an open records officer's position. We kept the positions. However, I unfunded those positions to help offset the cost to the member localities. We anticipate several retirements with large leave balances this next fiscal year. We expect a small increase in our work release compensation insurance. We have to remove the work release drivers' revenue. So our total budget increase due to payroll is three hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. If you could go to the next slide, please. Our capital improvements, we requested at the beginning of the budget process that this hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars be taken out of our reserve account and not be added to the member portions. So you'll see on our capital improvements for FY twenty-two, I'm building improvements of ten thousand dollars, which is, we need to replace some of our porcelain toilets with stainless steel toilets. We have the miscellaneous capital outlet, twenty-five thousand. We have a kitchen equipment, sixteen thousand for an oven, and our security software increase of, it's seventy-five thousand for the upgrade, which is just, it's due for its upgrade. Our system is six years old. So the current software that we have is not supported anymore, and therefore, that's why we have that in there for a total of one hundred and twenty-six thousand. If you could go to the next slide. So that increased our local members' portions from thirty-eight, three million eight hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-nine to four point four million, four million four hundred eleven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. There was extensive discussion with the jail authority during our January and our February meeting about should the member localities fund that full four point four million, or should they take part of it out of the reserve account? And my recommendation was not to take any of it out of the reserve account. If you could go to the next slide, I can explain why in further detail. So you'll see current, our estimated FY twenty unrestricted net position is five million forty-eight thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. The jail authority has adopted a twenty point five percent operating reserve, which gives us seventy-five days. That's one point five million. We've also included the five-year capital improvement of two point eight million, which leaves us with six hundred and eighty-five thousand unrestricted funds to utilize. So after the discussion, or we, here at the facility, felt that if we utilized that, it wouldn't take any time for that to be gone. We've worked very hard to have the financial foundation to at least handle our capital improvement projects without going back to the member jurisdictions for additional revenue. If you go to the next slide, that's all that I have as far as the budget that was adopted last Wednesday. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I would strongly encourage that once the COVID nightmare is behind us and that we're all back open, I would greatly appreciate it if the entire board would like to come for a tour of the facility. You can even hold your meeting here. If you like, we can make room for you to have that here, give you a tour, give you some food, and let you see what you get for your money. We would love to have you.
That opinion piece would write itself, wouldn't it? So what does this mean for your expected contribution from King William?
Sure. When you started to talk, it muted out.
Sorry. So we talked about what the member contributions are, you know, for your entire operating budget. Did you have somewhere where that is affecting our contribution, how much more you're expecting from King William?
Okay. She's gonna pull it up now. She sent it with the packet to your finance department, but she can have it pulled up here in just a second.
It's around a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase.
Is that, is that the one million forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight?
She's gonna grab it for me right now. I apologize. I thought I had it in here, and I didn't.
We're receiving it right now.
I thought we sent that with it. My apologies.
Yeah, on my form, Mr. Superintendent, I'm sure it shows a hundred and thirty, almost a hundred and thirty-one thousand increase.
That sounds right. I just want to get the form here, actually, just so I can confirm that.
That's fine.
Sheriff, maybe you can, in the interim, explain a little bit more about what does a plan B look like? If we simply can't afford it due to low revenue or decreased revenue, what does a plan B look like? Is there one?
There we go. Can I answer that, Sheriff? Maybe give some information towards that?
Absolutely.
Sheriff, I think one of the, see if I can answer this the best way. One of the things that they're always asked by board members, and trust me, we work as hard as we possibly can to keep our expenses down and keep the member portions down. But regional jails were formed several years ago to help keep each locality's cost down. And it's hard to look at that several years later when you see a hundred and thirty, is it a hundred? Let's see, I was looking at it here. It's close. Hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollar increase or estimated increase. But to give you an example of what it costs to run a jail, a local jail. When I left Gloucester County, I was there for twenty-one years, and when I left, I was running the jail there. And we had more inmates there than they do now. They have about twenty to eighteen to twenty-two inmates now on a daily basis there. And the last time I checked, their budget was over two point four million dollars just for the jail. So what my, to answer your question as far as a plan B goes, is we keep working the best that we can to try to bring in additional revenue, keep costs down, but it's still saving the member localities' funds as far as having their own facility, if that answers your question.
Somewhat, yes. Just, yes, sir, for now. Thank you.
Okay. Are these numbers subject to change if COVID completely disappeared?
It could be reduced slightly. It just depends on our insurance rates. When we get to receive our insurance rates, it could come down a little bit. If work release does start back up and we can get our numbers up in our work release unit. Before COVID, one of the problems we had, we used to have the second, for our size, our size facility, we had the largest work release unit in the state. The problem is, eighteen months ago, the Department of Corrections, who used to send us inmates on a monthly basis, we had approximately fifty to sixty inmates on our work release. When COVID hit us, we had right at thirty or just a little less than thirty because the Department of Corrections eighteen months ago stopped sending localities' state responsible inmates for their work release program. What they found were their camps, where they produce what they need to survive, were only at a fifty percent occupancy level. So they were sending all of their inmates that would meet their criteria trustee-wise and work release-wise to run, to work in their facilities, and it was very difficult, and it still is very difficult. Even if COVID wasn't here right now, we would have a hard time. So I don't see the work release bringing in additional revenue enough to where it's going to impact it greatly. It could change slightly. It's based off of the amount of inmates that you have in the facility. But that changes if King William's inmate population goes down. If they have forty inmates during this billing cycle and it goes down to twenty-five inmates, if the other four member jurisdictions stayed the exact same, then they might have a reduction for that quarter. These are just generic, not the exact formula that's used, but just to give you an example of how your jurisdiction could drop inmates or decrease their inmates, and it really not significantly changed the amount because that's affected by the other four jurisdictions. So it may decrease a little, sir, but it's too early in the game to be able to tell now.
So our numbers are based on the number of prisoners from our jurisdiction? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Sir, would you please forward this spreadsheet to our focal point so we can get it distributed?
Yes, sir. Have we sent this?
They have it now.
They have it now. Right.
Thank you.
Can we move the screen down so we can see the totals? We can't see the bottom.
Yeah.
There it is.
Mr. Doss.
Yes, sir.
Is the quarantine when they come in, I know it's a good idea, don't get me wrong, and not saying you should change it, does that cost you more money? I know you're keeping them quarantined so you don't spread it.
Yes, sir. I probably, I should have touched on that. To give you a little information on what happens when an inmate is arrested, when an inmate is arrested or brought into the facility or a current inmate goes out of the building, if they step one foot into the Sallyport, when they return back into the building, they are quarantined for fourteen days. So they are isolated for fourteen days before they go into general population. So we've had to rework the facility.
Every time they go to court, then?
Yes, sir. Every single time. Yes, sir. So we, the inmate population has not had an actual visit since March, March seventeenth, when we shut down. A video visitation, we're gonna do that once a month. Once a month, where we have each housing unit, and their family calls in and gives you the address, and that way they're able to have a visit through video visitation on a tablet. The inmate phone systems that we have, we provide two free phone calls a week to the inmate population. And that's, our counselors are staying very busy just trying to keep their mental health for their inmate population at a steady level.
Better put one officer strictly for that quarantine.
We have one officer that's strictly assigned to that quarantine unit. And it's a difficult challenge. It really is. We've actually had several fights in that unit. We've, the Department of Corrections requires us to have an inmate out of isolation one hour a day. They can stay locked down for twenty-three hours a day. But we end up having so many inmates in there, we can't do one hour a day and get everybody out for their hour. So what we've had to do is to split the unit in half, keep one inmate at one side, one inmate at the other side, and keep them out to try to make sure that we meet that Department of Correction requirement. Then when the inmates go in, the entire outside area that they were at is sterilized before the next inmate comes in. And we've had several fights in that when those two inmates are out. It's difficult for staff and it's difficult for the inmate population, and just like it is for every department in every city and county. It's an extreme challenge. Are there any other questions I can answer, or?
If not, thank you for the presentation. I'm sure any questions will be forthcoming.
Please, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity. If you ever have any questions, please don't hesitate to give me a call, and we would more than, more than welcome you if you'd like a tour of the facility.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we have Donna Klein, the Executive Director of Arts Alive. If we can get her unmuted, please.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for giving us some time on the agenda tonight, and thanks for the support you've given us in the past. Like with other organizations, the coronavirus has knocked us down, but it hasn't knocked us out. We are still trying to keep the arts alive in the community, and we have four programs. I have a presentation. I don't know if it's, if you guys have a copy or if you're gonna put it up, but I will, okay. Make sure we get it. Okay. So on page two, it lists the four programs that we have. We have onstage performance series. We have children's summer camps. We have scholarships, and we offer visual art workshops and exhibits. On page three, our onstage performances, normally we have five during our season series, but during twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we were only able to have three. And with our current season, it's basically on hold. We haven't been able to do any of the performances due to coronavirus. But we are working on the next page that shows the performances that we're trying to get in for twenty-one, twenty-two. We've got a Family Entertainer. We've got John Denver Tribute Band. We've got Seals and Croft. We've got a holiday performance by one of our most popular former Sons of Siren Deb. And then we have a Showtune Extravaganza. We're also gonna try to reschedule the two performances that we had for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty season so that our season subscribers can get those. Since they paid for them, we want to be able to get it to them. On the next page, it shows we have four hundred and twenty-eight season subscribers, which has been the most we've had, and a hundred and fifty of those subscribers are from King William County. This year's season subscriber list has not been finalized only because a lot of people are still waiting to see what the COVID nineteen guidelines are gonna be. So, but more than half of our season subscribers have already signed up for the new season, which we think is an amazing testament to the commitment, the support of our season subscribers, given we haven't been able to do any of the performances yet. We also have two summer camps. The Summer Art Camp is usually held end of June. It's a week long camp that, uh, offers visual art, classes, dance, theater, music. Unfortunately, we weren't able to hold that camp in twenty twenty. We are cautiously planning for this year, um, scheduled for June twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. Uh, but in twenty nineteen, we again had, uh, one of our highest, uh, campers. It was a hundred and fifty-eight participants and seventy-one of those were from King William County. Now, the next page, uh, we offered the Missoula Drama Camp, which is usually at the end of August. And that, um, we were not able to hold that obviously for twenty twenty, but we are going to try for August the second through the seventh for this year. This is where actors come in from Missoula Children's Theater to, and they bring in the scripts. We're only limited to sixty participants. That's how many scripts and costumes are available. Twenty nineteen, we did have the sixty campers and had seven on a waiting list. And thirty-five of those were from King William County. And then three, over three hundred citizens came to watch the two performances at the end of the week. On the next page, um, we, in May of twenty twenty, we did award four, um, scholarships, which, um, is an unprecedented number for us. We gave away two for, uh, visual arts and two for performing arts. And of those awarded, two of the recipients were from King William County. On the next page, um, we do offer visual art workshops for adults and, um, and we did resume those workshops in twenty twenty. We moved them to West Point United Methodist Church because it offered us more space for social distancing. But, um, we do have Virginia Museum of Fine Arts educators teach some of the classes well, as well as some of the local artists. And we keep them very affordable. Um, again, we had a record number of participants in twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty, most of them were, were full. We haven't had any art exhibitions due to the not having any performances in our past seasons. So they're usually tied to the performance. So we didn't have any art exhibits this year. Community highlight, instead of, since we weren't able to hold the summer camps, we had a special exhibition for children. And we asked them to submit entries for things that they had created during their time at home. We had twenty-four participants and there was a variety of submissions from photography to clay to drawings, science sculpture, even culinary arts. Um, of the twenty-four participants, ten of them were from King William County. And we want to congratulate Lexi Blackwell for, she was one of the winners of a drawing we had from all of its participants. And she will be attending one of our summer camps for free. Um, on the next page, just some community outreach, we purchased, um, a holiday CD and mailed it to all of our season subscribers for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, just as a token of our appreciation for their continued support. And we received a lot of good feedback from that. We have seen a, an increase in all of our programs before COVID hit, which means more people are hearing about us and wanting to participate. And we hope to continue to partner with organizations and do event, you know, to have some speaking engagements and event participation. We'll do some, um, donations and, and purchase ads, those kind of things. And lastly, just looking forward, Arts Alive would still love to be able to get the VMFA Art Mobile to King William County. There, um, there's no charge to have it here. There's no admission for the visitors and Arts Alive will take care of coordinating all aspects of the event. It was very popular at Crab Carnival when we had it in twenty nineteen and a lot of students came through and the, and the general public just enjoyed the, the exhibits that were there. So it would be a great addition to any county event. Once we can get back into having those events. But we, I'll follow up with the Parks and Rec and the school superintendent once we know that we can get something like that scheduled. So I, I just, again, thank you for giving us time and for your support. And if there's any other way we can participate with the county, uh, you know, just let us know, or if you have any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time and the presentation. And we appreciate you guys, uh, continuing to provide these services and, um, you know, in these challenging times. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Next up, we have the Pumukka Regional Library. We have, uh, Tom Shepley on the phone. Can we find and unmute him, please?
I do not see a Tom on the, uh, participants list.
Hey, Tom, if you're on, can you, uh, just pop into the chat real quick and, and identify yourself so we can, uh, get you unmuted? Do, have we had anybody reach out? I don't see anything coming across the chat. Okay. Um, all right. I'll tell you what, let's go ahead and move on. Uh, do we have, uh, Ann from Legal Aid Works? If you're on again, if you could pop into the chat so that we could identify to get you unmuted.
I do not see anyone with that name.
Okay. I'll tell you what, let's keep things moving along because we're running a bit, a bit late here. So let's go ahead and, uh, Chief Reeves, if you would give your update. And again, if, uh, Mr. Shepley or, uh, Ms. Manigali, you're on the phone or on, uh, the session, if you could reach out via the chat and see if we can get you unmuted and we'll come back to you if you're here. But in the meantime, uh, Chief Reeves, why don't you go ahead and begin your presentation? Let me, can I pause you real quick? We got terrible audio on you.
How about that?
Much better.
Okay. Um, continuing forward with the personnel. All right. We have filled all of our full-time positions that are open. As of February first, they're all filled. Uh, currently with four paramedics, uh, I'm sorry, four medics, one intermediate, three paramedics, spread across the three shifts. Still backfilling with part-timers regularly. All of our employees are being required to wear masks inside, outside, anytime they can't space six feet or more. Anytime they're out in public there, they have to wear masks regardless of the call type. We are, uh, testing a new version of N ninety-five mask, which is CDC, and NIOSH approved due to difficulty in obtaining the rare, uh, regular disposable mask. There's a filter that goes in the mask that, uh, is basically two dollars a piece. Made by Invo. It's a hospital-based mask, which is very sturdy and much more comfortable. We have to have good results on that very soon. Uh, our apparatus, our brush truck has returned repaired and should be going out soon for state inspection. It's in very poor condition. Hopefully we'll get it through that. The third out ambulance, the oldest one in the fleet, is at the shop being evaluated for repairs to the air conditioner and heat in the patient compartment, which can't be in service though down. I can't even begin to give you an estimate on what that's going to cost until we hear back from the shop. Just waiting on, uh, AES to get back with us on that. Station one is still closed to the pan, due to the pandemic. Knock on wood, we still haven't had any internal spread of COVID nineteen. We have had a couple of our, uh, folks quarantined due to exposure. One, uh, positive test, which that was earlier on, uh, um, late in last year, which has already, uh, been mitigated with no spread internally. We do still, uh, suffer from, you know, the fatigue of, you know, every day, day in and day out. Our folks are, um, doing everything they can to prevent spread and it's, it's working. The decontamination efforts and the isolation, I think, is really what's, what's keeping us afloat. Our bay heaters have been repaired and, uh, thanks to our maintenance staff, uh, the RSAF grant that we were looking to purchase some equipment with for the ambulances and the first out medical units was denied. However, we're immediately going to reapply, uh, with an improved application, we believe, through, uh, changes made on base of, uh, the evaluator's feedback. We, uh, have installed touchless faucets throughout the entire building, including, uh, the area down at the end of the building, which is primarily used for training and, uh, voting and stuff right now due to the building being close to the public. The life pack that was on the third ambulance, uh, has been repaired. It was able to be fixed, but it is at, it's in the life. We'll have to be looking towards replacing that in the near future. Hopefully the RSAF in the next cycle to take care of it for us. The antenna, the admin building has been installed and working fine. We have, uh, radio service now throughout the building, which serves fire radios as well as the sheriff's office we are in here. Our chief Jones is still working on the smoke detector program. We've got a couple of different companies that we're looking at. They provide grants so that we can help our citizens who may or may not be able to afford the smoke detectors and don't have them in their homes, obtain them through us and they'll go out and install one for them. The sheriff's office has moved into a second round with the firing EMS staff of the COVID vaccination. So all the folks that went through the first wave are now being contacted by VDH for their second round. Very slow and, uh, very slow process at this point. We have, uh, had all of our medics approved through the OMD. And we've had, we've written the MOUs and MOAs and had them sign. And are simply waiting on Dr. Williams and VDH for the final signature to, uh, approve all of our folks for, uh, to be able to help with vaccinations. Um, and for, uh, if there comes a point in time where we can hold a posted clinic here through VDH, that we'll have all, all that paperwork is already done and, uh, has been prepared to sign off. The vaccine, the vaccine shortages last week, some of the reports we were getting back with, that we are getting around twenty percent of what we need to continue forward with the, the push that we're originally talking about. And we don't expect a robust improvement until around people. All vaccines currently being administered are being scheduled via callbacks from VDH. And that is from the people who have already had round one and going back for round two, as well as anybody that they're able to reach out to in one B or the schools or special, uh, risk groups. They're all being contacted by VDH to come back in for their vaccines, uh, or to schedule a vaccine. And then I have been appointed along with Liz Bartol to the, uh, Reserve to the PMS EMS Operations Committee to help support the growth and function of our, uh, PMS organization who governs our EMS agency. That's all I have. You guys have any questions?
Um, I'll elaborate a bit on that vaccine thing when we get down to that, uh, item K. But, uh, I want to compliment Chief Reeves for keeping up on this. You know, there've been a lot of meetings, a lot of emails, a lot of calls. Um, and there's a lot of information flowing out of a lot of various sources, but, uh, he's on top of it. So I want to thank him for that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, if there's no one else, let's go ahead and move on. Uh, I don't see anything coming across in the chat. So we'll just go ahead and pass over those other items for now. And move on to item H, which is comprehensive plan and utility bonds. Ms. Graham and Mr. Hudgens.
Mr. Hillenstaff pretty much covered our overview of our comp plan. Our committee is meeting once to twice a month. We will keep everybody, planning commission and the board, um, informed of all of our meetings and what's going on. And of course, we do have a few other, uh, work sessions that will, uh, be needed between now and then. And we will be reaching out and doing a lot of community, um, outreach as well, probably similar to what we've done with the draft ordinance. Anyone have any questions on the?
Anybody? Okay.
Um, if I could change gears for just a moment, I know it's getting late. But while we have the board here and the planning commission, um, we do need to set another joint work session with the Berkeley group on the draft ordinance. Um, I did get with Olivia today and it looks like April twelfth. Um, is probably going to be the next best date. And I wanted to make sure that that was okay with everyone.
I'm going to be out of town that day. I'll actually be in North Carolina. That, that whole week.
And I'm sorry, Sherri, that date one more time. I was, I was.
April twelfth. They aren't able to do March twenty-second. We need to, um, here are the results of the survey. And they're wanting to look for feedback and any recommended changes that may be needed.
That's our regular work session anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think it, the date sounds familiar.
I think this is one that you had talked about maybe moving because you were out of town and we said that we had.
Yeah. Yeah, actually that and I think it's a joint, it's a budget.
Yeah, on Friday.
Yeah, that I'm going to be out of town also. That whole week.
You can't bring your, you have your, you want to have your Zoom? I doubt.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can do it that way, but it was a question, uh, depending on what COVID does.
I doubt we're going to be any farther.
If we still, if we're still under the governor's order in any form, then I can do that legally. Otherwise I have only two per year, correct? Electronically?
That's correct. And I can't predict what the governor's going to do, but I can tell you based on the update that we got the other day, we are not going to be, uh, out of the COVID woods. That's for sure.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention again.
And that was a budget work session.
I think we're good.
All right. We'll go ahead and, uh, set it up for the twelfth. And Mr. Robert, if you can't make it and you have some comments or something, uh, please send them to us. We'll make sure that they get out to everyone.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely participate Zoom. That's not going to be the issue. I just didn't want to fall into that. Uh, you know. You know, you, you could only do two per year electronically. And it seems like, you know, like Travis said, we're still going to be under the governor's order. So that will be allowable, I would imagine. Is that right, Travis?
That, again, that's my guess. Uh, I would be shocked if, if we're moving any quicker than that. I mean, as Stacy just said, we're into April before we even have an adequate supply of vaccine, not, not to mention an actual rollout of people getting vaccinated. And, um, you know, even once you get people vaccinated, it's not a free for all. So, um, I've got a feeling we're still going to be living this life for a little while longer.
I believe so.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hudgens on the utility bond.
I just wanted to make you aware of the steps that need to be taken. First step in bonding for utility projects because we have a comp plan. The planning commission actually has to approve of the project. A testing that is in accord with the comp plan before even the board can authorize the project. And obviously we're in the middle of updating our comp plan. The comp plan on the books right now doesn't mention specifically what any utility projects might be. It only goes so far as to say that, uh, providing public water is a good thing for dense growth. So along those lines, I want to make you aware of the steps and the timeline that is going to be required from both the board of supervisors and the planning commission. First county staff has to submit to the planning commission what the project is and where it's going to be. And specifically, we're talking about the new water tower that we have already identified and matched to the utility plan and spoken to you about. And, uh, last week county staff went to the site, identified three specific locations. And we have our engineering consultants giving us a breakdown of which one might be the best or pros and cons on each of those. At that point, after we submit to the planning commission, the planning commission may or have to request the board hold a public hearing notification. And then, uh, once they make a ruling, they will send that to the board. If the commission does not act within sixty days, the project is approved. The board may overrule the commission by majority vote. And, um, the commission's rule may also be appealed. Appeal gets sent to the board and the board has ten days. Or sorry, the appeal must be made within ten days of the commission's ruling. And then the board has sixty days to make a ruling on that. So that's all just to say, just to let you know what is going to be expected, what's going to be needed as we, before we even ask for a bond and ask for your authorization for a project. Do you have any questions for that?
Board members, questions? All right. If we formulate some, we will let you know. All right. Next item is I, which is apparently my item, uh, the election results. We had, of course, the special election last week. Mary Sue Bancroft was victorious in the treasurer's election. Karina Funkhauser was victorious in the commissioner of revenue election. And Terry Stone, my old dear friend, was victorious in the school board election. So, look forward to working with all three of them. Uh, we obviously have some work ahead of us. So, um, what we can do together, the better, set some positive groundwork and, and try to move forward and get things moving in a positive direction. So congratulations to all. I see Ms. Bancroft on the call. Not sure about others, but, uh, yeah, looking forward to it. Now we have Ms. Journalin with the FY twenty one treasures transfer to school.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, evening.
So what I wanted to do was, um, go ahead and keep the board, um, up to date with all the transfers that have occurred regarding school funding. And hopefully with Ms. Bancroft now in office too, we can get together and then talk more about how we will kind of work together with the schools and, um, figure out a better way of how we're going to do these transfers rather than just a million here, a million there. You know, just at this point though, we are keeping track of it. Every time I do this kind of a report, I do send it to the schools and the treasurer so they can review it, make sure I haven't missed anything. But I, I wanted to go and let you know that this is what we will do. We'll continue to provide this information to our board, our county board. So included in the board packet this evening is a summary of the transfers from treasurer's office from county operating bank account to schools operating bank account through January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one. Total transfers to school, seven million, one hundred sixty nine thousand, three hundred and forty. The remaining funds appropriated for fiscal year twenty twenty one to be transferred is four million, eight hundred fifty two thousand, four hundred seventy four. Also included is a summary for the county's revenue received for schools funding through December thirty first, twenty twenty. As of December thirty first, twenty twenty, the total funds received by the county for school funding is seven million, nine hundred fifty one thousand, ninety two. The fiscal year twenty twenty one budget included nine million, five hundred forty nine thousand, eight hundred and two local appropriations to schools less debt service and two million, four hundred seventy two thousand, thirteen budgeted county school share and state sales tax for a total of twelve million, twenty one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen. So overall, what we have transferred, we're pretty much in line with what the county has received as of December thirty first. And I do notice on the report that says treasurer's transfers to school. There's a column that reads school deposits into C N F checking account. So anytime the treasurer does do a overall million dollar transfer, say like in January, there was a million dollar transfer. But we want to net that eleven thousand, eight hundred fifty eight dollars that actually was brought to the treasurer's office by the school board to be deposited and the treasurer deposited that amount into our operating account. And as far as the forensic audit, um, I just want to just touch base really quick on that too, that we, we did ask D H G to kind of take a backseat for a couple of weeks. Um, we've asked them to halt working and to our, until the new treasurer has taken office. So we asked that they stay away for two weeks because at one point they were just really just spinning their wheels and it was costing the county money. Are there any questions?
Ms. Jolene, how much have we spent?
I'm sorry. Mr. Greenwood, could you ask that question again?
Yes, I was just wondering how much have we spent up to date on that forensic audit?
I believe we're at fifty five thousand through January.
Okay, thank you.
They have given us an estimate and we have told them it cannot exceed the amount of, um, I think we, we did include that with the board packet and the board information when we sent the letter out. Um, I believe it's sixty nine thousand. But we, we have told them we cannot exceed that amount.
Okay, thank you.
We, uh, I'm sure that we had a contracted amount for that forensic audit.
We had an estimate.
It was just an estimate.
It wasn't estimate, right, right. And what they found as they got into, um, the audit, there is a lot of documentation that, um, not like, it's not electronic. They're doing a lot of digging, more than they thought they would have to do. And there are general ledger to track back the deposits that they see in the bank statement, finding them in our general ledger, finding the day to day operational documentations of even the deposit, the deposits that I just mentioned where the school brings deposits over. There's a lot of digging this and a lot of, um, having to request the items a couple of times before it's understood what they were asking for.
Is this all requested stuff that was in the system or was it in a file?
Yeah, so, yeah, for the most part, what they have been doing is they have asked for system generated reports, our bank statements, and then documentations of the daily transfers, things like that of any requests. So if their school did receive a million dollars, they would ask the treasurer, can you provide the document that, uh, you, that backs that one million dollar transfer up? What was the reason for it? You posted it in the system and things like that.
Are we looking for a physical document or just something that has been entered?
No, um, as far as those documents, they are looking for physical documents and the treasurer's office was actually, it was, they, they spent a lot of time having to go through the documents that were in storage.
Yeah, that's what I understood, that it's in storage. A lot of that stuff is in boxes in various offices.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So I, I just want to make sure that whatever path that we go down with this report, that we're not marching towards ultimately being told that it just can't be done without, you know, untold expenditures or what we get at the end of it is just some generic audit report, you know, just, just states, so the treasurer's office had poor internal controls. You know, I mean, I can write that report. Uh, I, I, you know, they knew we had this type of situation on my hands. So I'm, I'm a bit miffed that we've come back with the higher estimate. And I'm, I'm, again, I don't want that end product to be just some generic piece of paper. All right. You know, we, we had specific things that we wanted to know. And if they can't tell us those things with the data that they have, then they need to be upfront and tell us that. And we need to go ahead and find another way. Uh, but if they're confident that they can get us the answers that we're seeking with the data that they're, that we can get access to, then, um, you know, that's, that, that's okay.
That is the same conversation I had with them when they sent that email exactly, that if, yeah, and they did, they, they touched base on a few items, that they will be providing both boards, you know, solutions, uh, you know, suggestions on how this could, you know, work better. But as you said, um, uh, it was probably in October when I kind of rang them in and said, we just need you to focus on the transfers to the schools, nothing more. We're not looking, asking you to dig into the day to day functions of the treasurer's office or anything like that. Just stay focused on this item.
Yeah, because I mean, the CAFR details the internal controls that we're aware of, and a lot of it's just a staff issue, just, you know, can't have a twenty person treasurer's office.
Now, we've had that very frank conversation.
All right, good. Then thank you. And then they know that what we're looking for. So good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Next up goes back to me again, uh, with the, um, talking about outreach efforts from the middle peninsula planning district commission. I won't, I'm trying not to take too long here, but we had a, um, a mayors and chairs meeting, um, from the P D C last Wednesday. And Dr. Williams was on the call. And the reason we had the meeting is because we were getting frustrated at what we saw as a lack of diligence on behalf of, of the state and, and the Three Rivers Health Department and getting the vaccine rollout started. So Dr. Williams, uh, wanted to convene a meeting with, with the, the chairs and the mayors and just kind of go over what, what the ground facts are. We discussed the shortage that they don't, you know, anticipate having solved. And that's a national level issue, uh, for, for, you know, two months from that meeting. So seven weeks now. We expect the shortage to be solved. Then we talked about the rollout and the logistics and we offered several different ideas and, and how we could expand that once, uh, adequate vaccine supply is, is actually in the hands of the health department. And Dr. Williams appreciated a lot of those ideas. And one of the biggest ideas that came out of it was one of his own, which was that he thinks that really we should be talking about activating the National Guard, um, to help set up, um, vaccine delivery days in various localities in rural Virginia. He, he suggested like a, a rolling National Guard unit that could go to various areas in rural Virginia, the middle peninsula, the northern neck, southwest Shenandoah, south side and, um, help with the logistics of getting these vaccines delivered to try to knock down some of the backlog. So to that end, uh, Louis Lawrence and I drafted a letter that went to the governor today detailing that idea, pointing out some of the challenges that we face in the Three Rivers Health District. Uh, and that has already crossed the governor's desk, including that idea for the National Guard. So hopefully we will hear more about that soon, whether or not they think that's a feasible idea. Ending the meeting, we talked about expectations. Obviously a lot of us have been getting calls, wondering where these vaccines are, assuming that, you know, since the health department, you know, the, the local health department, that that's where people need to go for the vaccines, um, that they're readily available, that people are getting shots and all, and you know, it, there's really, there's been poor communication from the state health department. And it's causing problems for our constituents being confused about where they go and who they contact to try to get on a list. Where they, what, you know, are they one A, are they one B, are they one C, are they two F? And, and it, nobody really has a clear answer. So the idea was brought that we, uh, at the regional level, bring on a PR firm, um, consortia media has worked with us before to do a public outreach campaign to give the actual facts about the vaccine rollout, the expected timeline, where you can get good information. And actually integrate this with the health department. The health department said that they need all the help they can get. And what they would do is hand over the keys to the Three Rivers Health Department website and have consortia media run that end of it. We would also do, uh, social media, print, some radio. And actually try to get word out of what the truth is and what people should be expecting. The cost that they were looking for was a contribution from each locality of three thousand dollars. Not a huge amount of money, but it's a pretty big region wide effort that we want to undertake. And so, uh, I was going to ask the board tonight if that was something that we thought was worthwhile. Obviously I think it's worthwhile or I wouldn't be bringing it to you. Because I don't know about you guys, but I've been getting calls from constituents, not only my own district, but everybody's district. About when these vaccines are going to be available and frustration at the lack of good information out there. So, uh, give me your thoughts. Is that something you think is worthwhile? I'd like to maybe go ahead and get a motion to, to, to get that off so that we can get this effort up and rolling.
Mr. Chair, I'll make it motion. I'll second.
I muted myself. Any discussion?
Just to add to this discussion that if we don't do something ourselves, it's going to be a long time before somebody does it for us.
Well, that's the point of this. We, we, we felt that as a region, we've got a stronger voice, uh, at the state house and at the governor's mansion especially. And, uh, that's what we came to determine that if we're going to get this done, we're going to have to use that voice to, uh, A, inform our citizens and then B, advocate for them at the state level. So that's what this is all about.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, while there's still discussion on the floor, Natasha has a question.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, what I wanted to ask is if, um, this is approved, uh, is the board approving that to come from the unassigned general fund since it is not part of the budget?
That's what I wanted to bring up Travis. I wanted to see if we could use CARES fund for it since it's got extended.
Well, uh, sure. And that's maybe where we need to back up a little bit because if there is sufficient CARES funds that isn't eligible. Well, we believe it is an eligible expense, although it was, uh, you know, that's up to each individual locality, how we use that money and making sure that we're using it for, uh, approved expenditures. But the general idea amongst the mayors and then the administrators was that this would be a qualifying use if the CARES funding is available. But we have expended a great deal of our CARES funding, uh, to the schools and then for the bonuses most recently. So it may not be available, which is a question for Natasha.
This, Mr. Chair, can we, uh, make the motion with if it's available from CARES and if not from the undesigned?
Yes, we could do that. But if Natasha's still at the podium, as if she has an answer for her question. Yes, we could do that, but if Natasha's still at the podium, as if she has an answer for her question.
Yes, if, what I have, we have expended a lot of the, of the funds, and we're just, you know, each day is just kind of looking at that number and but what I have kind of thought is there are a lot of things that we did use CARES funds for that were actually part of our capital budget. And if the board is okay with some of those items being pulled from the capital money that we had already budgeted and then allowing us to use the CARES funds for things that we hadn't counted on this fiscal year. One example is like we use CARES money for the 365 windows, whatever, to get everyone on the same email, whatever, whatever. That's $10,000 right there that, truthfully, I could pull from our capital. We have 25,000 set aside for capital improvements in the IT department, so if the board is okay with that, I can, I can definitely do some moving around.
I think either way, we need to do it. I mean, whether it's.
So Natasha, if you're comfortable with that, I would say that that's, that's a motion we can make to, to go ahead and use the, the CARES fund that had been assigned to capital, reassign that to the $3,000 of that to this.
And I'm glad that this came up too, because now it gave me an opportunity to kind of, just kind of let you guys know that that's where we're at with the CARES money, and that's kind of my thought on how we will kind of balance out and end it, end it out for the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so Bill, your motion then is to reassign CARES funding from the, the capital to this effort in the amount of $3,000.
Yes, correct.
Very good.
I will second.
Okay, discussion on that. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
All right, thank you very much. Okay, well, that concludes, I think, right? Let me check. Yep, because that was my addition to K. So now we're on to board requests. Mr. Moran, you go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, to clarify a statement I made during the Hill Group discussion. That may have been misconstrued. My point that I was trying to make is that it's difficult to incentivize and lure heavy industry into the county, and I made a statement regarding Nestle Purina. By no means do I mean that we don't want Nestle Purina in the county. They're a valuable partner. They're a great asset to the county, and it's just difficult with water, power, resource limitations to lure, when we were talking about what do we want to see for the future. So I hope that's better understood, my intent, and that's all.
Thanks.
We say, Mr. Hodges, it, the audio is going up and down a little bit. Mr. Chair, I only have one thing, just remind the folks about our special meeting if they want to tune in, dealing with the assessment on the 10th at 7:00 P. M. by Zoom. That's all I have.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes, I just, thank you everybody for coming, and I guess what I had to say, what I wanted to, probably is gonna deal with more what we deal about on the special meeting. So we'll probably have a pub, a comment period at that meeting also. I don't want to foresee something that might, should have been weighted on that one, if we have something to talk about with that, if it's assessment related.
I mean, yeah, my, my thought would be that that discussion is for the, the call meeting. It's not on the.
Right, right. But I mean, I wanted to make a statement of something to look forward to in the future, but if we're gonna talk about it, then I'll just wait on that one, so.
Well, it's your time. I mean, go ahead.
That's true. Well, well, I'll just throw it out there, cuz it's not, it's nothing secret. We do have a board of equalization in place, and I just wanted to say that they are, they can be kept on for three years, so I would suggest whatever happens in the future, what happens goes on, let's keep them on board and as an advisory committee, and they said they would be willing to help us in any way, in any department, with any group. I just think we should keep them on, even with whatever outcome we come up with with this assessment, so keep tuned, come visit us on the meeting on Wednesday, and we'll, I guess, hash that one out. That's all.
Garber?
Yeah, during the comp discussion, it was mentioned recreation. I know I've mentioned this several times. The county does on a boat landing on Davies Mill Road, and I think that we did have a conversation with the game and inland fisheries at one time. That's a resource. Also, it was, it was mentioned about the industrial park. Let's not forget the commerce park that we have, that it's a big issue there. And I don't know what the answer is, but each and every one of those businesses will probably eventually leave if we don't find a solution. Maybe we can have a discussion with that, maybe ask Joyce McGowan to come and give us our options. That's pretty much it.
I guess it's my turn. Yeah, thanks, thanks for the participation tonight. We had a lot on the agenda and a lot of good information this evening. Thanks for supporting the effort to, to get this good information out to people about the vaccines, and we're hoping that's gonna help smooth things over and manage expectations while we work to get all the logistics in place to actually get this thing rolled out once we have the supply. For the staff that are here, either on the call or in the building, I want to thank you for all of, all of your help today. Since it's a challenging day for all of us, but you guys kept it cool and kept things rolling. Really appreciate that. So, you know, we're gonna chart a path forward that moves us in the right direction, and that's gonna take all of us, so thanks, and, you know, we all look forward to continuing to work together. Okay, so the next thing we have is a closed session. Who's got that motion?
Mr. Chair, I guess I, I can, I make a motion that we go into closed session in accordance with section 2.2, there's 3711 A1 of the Code of Virginia. I moved that the board of supervisors convene in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of an interim county administrator. Is that the proper?
Yes, I think, I think you got it.
I'd like a second.
All right. Discussion. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi, all right. The board is now gonna leave this room, and we've got a different Zoom setup for this closed session. We will be returning to this call once we've wrapped up that closed session to finish our business. So if you're interested in hanging out, you know, we'll keep this room open and then we'll return. You know, I can't tell you how long it's gonna take, but hopefully not too long.